Bill Paray.
Yeah.
I mean, because, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I went to all that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to the November 6, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. This is to formally advise as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations signed into law on June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on November 6, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternate public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the Town of Yarmouth website. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Here.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I will now call the meeting to order, and I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be public for what is shared, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for.
We have one item on our agenda this evening, the Local Comprehensive Plan and Update. And we are joined by a couple of members of our consulting team, Jeff Bag, and I'm sorry.
Adam Duchesneau.
Did we get that right? Okay, Adam, welcome.
That's correct, yep. Adam Duchesneau, Planner with the BSC.
Thank you, Adam. I'm sorry about that, and welcome, Jeff.
No problem.
You're a familiar face. In our packets this evening are materials prepared by the BSC group, and Kathy Williams, our Town Planner, will be reviewing the outline of the plan and next steps related to the LCP table of contents, the January Public Engagement Meeting, and the schedule. So Kathy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. I think you'll find in your packet there's two different options for a table of contents, and I think we'll go over them, and I'm going to hand it over to BSC Group to go through the details of it. But also, I provided you with a copy of the Regional Policy Plan, actual goals for their specific natural, built, and community systems, as well as a copy of the LCP template from the Cape Cod Commission's guidance document, just so you have all of that. And I'm going to hand it over to Jeff or Adam.
Yeah, great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Thanks for having us tonight, and thanks for, you know, letting us discuss this with you. We're at a good stage to have this kind of discussion with the Planning Board about kind of some of the structure for the Yarmouth LCP kind of going forward. You know, Kathy provided you with that background information, the Cape Cod Commission guidance document, which I think is really helpful. And then the two versions of the table of contents are pretty similar. And the first one was what we were originally kind of working off of was an idea to really maintain the topics and the groupings that the town had established through the Vision Plan, you know, the two-year-long process that the town went through, and had the groupings of categories, and all the survey questions were around those topic groupings, and then the goals and objectives that, you know, outline, that create the Vision Plan, have those kind of groupings. So we were, we had a version of the outline which would hold on to those titles and those sort of phrases, and then reference or acknowledge the Cape Cod Commission, the way that they have their structure. The main way we would initially do that is through the major categories, our natural systems, built systems, and community systems. And then we would nestle these topics underneath them, you know, throughout these, throughout the chapters. There would be these subheadings throughout. And then, you know, what we started to talk to Kathy about was whether the Planning Board would prefer that methodology, or in the second table of contents version, what we do is we would shift the subheadings. So we would maintain the natural systems, built systems, and community systems as main chapters, and then within them, we would use the exact phrasing that the Cape Cod Commission had, which, you know, if I, we can share a screen if that's helpful, but you have it in your packet.
Yep.
You know, they're, the wording and the groupings are slightly different. And so this was a discussion we kind of wanted to have with the Planning Board. It helps us where we are at now with drafting these chapters to kind of get some input from the group. So I think with that, I'll pause for a moment and see if there's questions. I can't currently share a screen, and Kathy, I don't know.
Yeah, I had asked Liam if you could both share your screen. He could give you permissions to both share your screen.
It says send a request, which I just did.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I have it up here on the screen as well, so the Planning Board can see it. I think the idea with the second version was, I think when we were doing the Vision Plan, we were just collecting ideas. We really weren't trying to put them into the different systems that were identified in the RPP. We were just doing it organically as the information came to us from our visioning. But I think now, when we're going to the LCP, we might want to follow more closely the RPP systems, and then insert our additional items from the Vision Plan into it. And you can see, under Community Systems, we have a whole section on Town Services and Recreation and Entertainment, which aren't necessarily part of the regular LCP. Also tried to combine some things together, at least when we're doing the existing conditions, where we're looking at, you know, the trends and the key issues, lumping together water resources. So let's talk about our fresh marine and ocean resources altogether, talk about our wetlands and wildlife habitat. Oh, there you go. Habitat together, and then also then open space. A lot of that information will come out of our Open Space and Recreation Plan, which has already been completed. Thank you, Will. And then under Built Systems, I think there's the whole community design and land use where we want to be doing things in development. With regard to transportation and connectivity, I think originally we had connectivity and mobility. Mobility is a term that Mast D O T uses a lot to talk about all different types of ways of getting around, but I think a lot of people were a little confused by whether that meant handicap, mobility, and access. So I just tried to combine it to transportation, which is in the RPP, and then the connectivity, which we had in our Vision Plan. And then climate mitigation and sustainability, a lot of those might be able to be put together in some fashion. Sustainability has a lot to do with energy and waste management as well. And then going back to the community systems, and this is really kind of the big, the big heavy hitter here, was community character and our cultural heritage, what makes Yarmouth special, so to speak, the economy, our town services, and then Recreation and Entertainment. We could also include housing under Community Systems, or we could have a separate chapter that is our housing plan and talk about all of our housing under a separate chapter because it's such a large part of the LCP. And then also, the Chapter 5, we got to have that whole capital infrastructure and facilities. And when we get to the targeted action items, we might want to be more detailed. We're going to have specific action items, you know, related to fresh and marine water resources. We might break it down a little bit more specific, and then we'll also be including the housing and capital infrastructure. You can see that at the end of the goals.
So we have.
Kathy did a great job of explaining that, so thank you, Kathy.
Should we discuss now?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have, you know, Table of Contents, I'll call it number one, and then we have number two. As I put them side by side, I, and I put next to it the Cape Cod Commission Policy Plan recommendations in terms of helping us with an outline. I think that the slight shift is, I'm comfortable with it. We just, we will be taking all of the, all of the good bones of the Vision Plan that included some specific goals and objectives, and integrating them into these, into these different slots, if that's what I'm understanding. Because we're not going to leave the, I mean, the Vision Plan is Chapter 1 anyway.
Right.
So it's all going to be, in many cases, it'll be right front and center in the Vision Plan. And then we're doing, I'll call it, as Kathy and I talked about it, kind of translating it from English into French a little bit, and trying to work towards some ability to move this forward as quickly as we can, and not necessarily recreate, you know, something that we don't need to recreate. I mean, I've gone through the Sandwich Plan, which was very comparable to this, Kathy, if I recall.
Yes.
If any of you have had a chance to see that, Sandwich Plan organized itself nicely this way. So that's where, that's where, that's where I stand on this. I like the transition that you worked up, Kathy, and with the help of the BSC Group. I think what I'm calling number two is one I think we could, we could work with. Just by way of background, this was one of the things Kathy and I talked about after our last meeting. I wanted desperately to get an outline. What does the big picture look like for this plan? And thank you for pulling this together so quickly in the course of a couple of weeks so that we get a feel for the main components. We, you know, I was uncomfortable. It was so, everything's out there. We've got, you know, stakeholder meetings, we've got lots of things. We need to, we need to know how to slot these things in now. And I think this helps, helps me considerably, so. So I'd like to start. I can start with anyone who would like to start. Mr. Saban?
Oh, sure. Why not?
As Vice Chair.
I appreciate the work that's been put in. I guess there's a couple of things, so that, I'm kind of mixing and matching between the two of these. Maybe I could hear a little discussion as to why the decision was made to have housing be a standalone item. I think that's the first question I would have. On the version 2, I guess this would be?
Yep.
You notice Chapter 4 is completely housing. The Commission keeps it in with Community Systems, and in version number 1, I'm assuming is similar to that, it's in Built Systems. So it's kind of get moved around here and there, so I guess I'd like to hear some discussion as to where that should lie. The other thing I have is that, to me, coastal resilience and climate mitigation, they just, to me, makes sense to be in the natural systems and not built systems. So again, I'd like to hear some discussion as to why those are in those locations, but those are my only things.
Maybe I'll start, and then Kathy, you can fill in. Those are great questions. You know, we, the one thing that we did do before the community meeting in September is that we had a quick discussion with Kathy, and we took housing as a topical area, and we moved it into Built Systems. And then, as we were going through this exercise after that, to see where we wanted to line up with the Cape Cod Commission, their guidance document and their template, they pull housing out into its own chapter. And so their guidance is, you know, for communities that have especially a recent housing production plan like Yarmouth, you know, we're not supposed to go in and reiterate everything that's in the housing production plan. We're going to pull out the highlights. And, you know, one thing that we see we would add into the housing discussion is all the other types of housing. So a housing production plan is, as you probably know, is really focused on affordable housing, whereas there are market rate housing considerations, there's rentals, there's short-term, there's short-term rentals, you have the workforce housing, you know, issues. So the housing chapter would discuss all of those elements, and the outline, the table of contents number 2, which has housing as its own chapter, is following directly in line with the Cape Cod Commission's template. And then, I think pretty similarly about coastal resilience and climate resiliency, right now, we're just mirroring where the Cape Cod Commission has it placed. And I think for the outline, I think it's going to be fine, because I think within the discussion, you know, there are some very specific Yarmouth things that we will, we'll be highlighting there. So at the end of the day, we're, our job is to make sure we cover everything and make sure that it fits somewhere. So hopefully that answers some of your questions, but the climate, the coastal resiliency climate is, is put in the same place that the Cape Cod Commission is kind of recommending the Minnesota has put them.
I'd also say, like, when we get to the actual goals, I think we would actually have, like, housing would end up being under the Community Services goal, and I think the infrastructure is actually under the Built Systems. So we would go back and put those particular goals within the correct Built System and Community Systems as outlined by the Commission. Yeah, capital facilities and infrastructure is under the Built Systems. So the goals, what we are looking for here, this is just giving us the existing conditions, getting some additional information, what's going on, what are the key issues, and just kind of bringing people up to speed. And then, in actually Chapter 6, you'd be having the targeted action items that would go under each individual one. I think if you wanted to move around the coastal resiliency, I think, I think Sandwich actually did do that. You probably could be fine with regard to where you put it, but I think there's no harm in keeping it the way the Commission had it. It might be easier for them to review and process the information, but it's kind of a little bit up to you guys. What we are planning on doing is get your input and come up with the table of contents, and then send it to the Commission and get an initial read from them to see if they'd be okay with it.
And I think as we go through this, and as we fill in, we'll have the ability to move things around.
It's going to get tweaked, for sure. As these guys start doing stuff in existing conditions, they might.
Once we see what the product is, it may be that they do sit in a different spot. We'll have, we'll have that, certainly have that capability. Susan?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Will?
No, no, I don't have any right now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Peter?
I'm all set right now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and Jeff, I actually just was jumping out and comparing the Commission's plan to this plan, and I think you've done a tremendous job with this outline. I guess one piece that kind of gnawed at me a little bit, under, you know, targeted action plans, and then looking at the subsets into the community systems, one of the, I'll call it bullet points, within the community systems is economy. I know we're not here to mirror the Commission's plan, but it, to me, it is such an important topic that, as you move down a little lower, you have housing kind of on its own, I really think some emphasis needs to be put on the fact that the economy is such an important topic here to Yarmouth, that we should make sure that, as I said, we're not mirroring the Commission's, but we put a little more emphasis on that, that's all.
Yeah, I think we hear that, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think this is, it's a, it's a little bit belts and suspenders exercise to go through the table of contents. I think as Kathy said, and Joanne said, as we start to build this out, I think, I think it's become clear to us that the economy is a major component as well. It's just, it's going to be nestled in this chapter, but it's going to have its own sort of unique discussion point, so we will make sure we track that.
Okay.
And then I think a little bit later on this evening, when we talk about the schedule, I think, you know, we're going to start talking about getting the Planning Board some versions, some draft versions of things, and I think that's when we'll make, we'll be able to test with the Planning Board that we have captured the essential elements and enough of the content for each of the topics. And I think one, one of the biggest challenges I think we're going to face as a group, as like a team, as a team, is taking an overwhelming amount of information and winnowing it down to the most concise and accurate version, you know, of information, because the Cape Cod Commission themselves say that this is supposed to be kind of an easy-to-read document, and if the communities wish to go into great depth about the subjects, then they recommend you create a second document, like a total appendices with, you know, all the data. And we're hoping to mirror some of the other more recently approved plans where this is something where we want the residents of Yarmouth to be able to kind of thumb through this and get the highest and most important salient points, and get, and get to the actual action plan, which is a really essential part of it. So that is going to be the task that we are endeavoring to do over the next couple of months, and so we'll be communicating with you guys on that as well.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Any, anything else? All right. Next, Kath, was the public engagement.
Yeah, I think I'm going to let Jeff speak to that. We did have some conversations, and I think I relayed this to the email when I transmitted it, is we had a great open house, in-person meeting back in September at the Senior Center, but if we wanted to start moving to some type of hybrid version, the only place to do that really is in this particular room where the cameras are set up, and you can actually do a hybrid meeting. There was some concern that it might be a little bit too small, depending on the interest that we get, and that because it's going to be in January, and there's going to be a lot of snowbirds who may not be in town, and also you don't have to want to worry about bad weather, that maybe we should just go ahead and try and make this an all-hybrid version. I think people are very used to it. We did it actually very successfully during the workshops for our visioning, where we had separate breakout groups and that type of thing. You know, we run kind of similarly that with facilitated breakout rooms, where we would all be involved with specific questions that we would be asking. So that, I think that's the big question, is do you guys, are you guys comfortable with that format? And then Jeff can talk about what would be included in that, the format of the meeting, and then we need to work on setting, setting a date. So hand it off to you, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, I think you hit the essential, the essential question for the Planning Board is going virtual. I think that's the key terminology, is that we're looking to have the January meeting virtual, where all the participants would, would get a link, and that would be the, you know, that would be the push, is to get as many people online to join the meeting. And I think, I think that's the essential question for the Planning Board tonight. I can kind of give the overview, and again, this was in the Planning Board's packet. You know, we're, we're looking to hold it in January. You know, I think a little bit later in January would be preferred, but we could, we could discuss that. There's, there's one holiday in the middle of January that we want to be aware of. It's a Monday holiday. But we would imagine having it at 6:00 PM or thereabouts. You know, in this document, this is an overview document, summary at this point, but, you know, the goal, the goals and objectives of the meeting itself is to continue to raise awareness of the LCP project. That's a, that's an essential component all throughout, is the more people who are aware, whether, you know, we hope that they all participate, but just making them aware of the project as, as the project kind of marches through ultimately to go to town meeting. The awareness factor is really important for residents to understand that this is a project that they will see at town meeting. We would introduce key findings, and then we would have, you know, built-in some kind of voting exercise, and small group discussions. So that would be the kind of the essential activity that we'd be looking to have in breakout groups. There was just a note about the September meeting was open house, easy to, easy to access, and then the January meeting was going to be more intensive discussion of topics. So just a rough agenda outline would be, you know, an introduction and orientation, and we can do an online poll to warm people up, to make sure that people understand how to use the online polling system. And then we would do some sort of presentation to kind of catch everyone up to speed on the project. You know, we would touch on the Vision Plan and the work that went into that, and then, you know, summarize the stakeholder meetings and where we, where we've been so far, including the community meeting. And then we would start to identify these really key topics that we, the trends that we're starting to see. And then what we would do is we would, and it sounds like many of you would be familiar with this, but virtually, we can then break the participants out into breakout groups, so there would be small groups, depending on the number of people who are at the meeting, who would have a BSC staff person and a Planning Board member on Zoom, and we would have a facilitated set of questions and discussions, and we can do some kind of polling activities within each of those breakout groups. And then we would come back into one large Zoom meeting, and we would pick somebody from each group to report out. And then I, you know, I kind of held this, this ending summary presentation for, for us to have this opportunity to wrap, wrap everything together and summarize, you know, where, what the next steps are. And so a couple of the highlights here, we would do in the presentation, I kind of discussed some of this. So project to date, highest ranked, highest ranked goals and objectives, and where we got that information from. And I think we would start, this would be our opportunity to really start to identify some of the existing conditions and trends, the goals and objectives that we, as a group, think are the most important for people to start to see and discuss. The breakout rooms, you know, we only have the outline right now, and we would work, once we have consensus on the Zoom meeting, we would build this out in advance of the January meeting, but I think we would, this probably actually has that old grouping, so we would, you know, be consistent with the table of content structure and have these similar topical areas that I think each breakout group would discuss similar things and have kind of a set of facilitated questions. So if we're lucky and we have 100 people, we break out, each group has 25 people, and that, that makes it a little more manageable to engage these people in more in-depth discussions, and the report out, and then conclusion and next steps. So I think that's kind of where we're at in terms of a high-level overview of where we would see the January meeting going, but we, again, this is a good opportunity for us to be talking to the Planning Board about any thoughts or concerns or questions that you might have, or ways that you would maybe help us enhance that meeting.
Okay, so we've got two things we need to provide some direction on. One is it being Zoom. I'm okay with that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Saban?
Just a couple of quick questions if I can. The meeting that we had at the Senior Center, how many people attended that? Do we know?
I don't have the sign-in sheet. I never got a copy, so do you have any idea?
Fifty?
I want to say 40 to 50 at least.
Forty to 50?
Yeah.
So roughly. And why I ask that is because I'm curious as to know, have you done this type of surveys through a Zoom before? And have you had positive results, or?
Yeah, my understanding is BSC has done it, and in my past experience, we've done, you know, Zoom meetings that have been pretty successful. It's, we, we would be cognizant that it doesn't necessarily get everybody. There are some people who won't use the technology, and so we hope that we caught some of those, you know, people at the open house where they felt a little more comfortable walking through and just, just being at the Senior Center to be in person. And then the Zoom meeting, you know, we're, you know, we, Adam and I both listened to your last meeting, the October 16th discussion that you, that you had, and, you know, we think that we can get additional demographic by holding the meeting virtually. And, you know, one of the strategies that we're going to work with Kathy on is, you know, creating a flyer and getting it out into the schools and getting it sort of into the backpacks of parents of school-aged children. So there is one, you know, that's one demographic that we think that we can increase attendance by having the Zoom meeting. But, you know, the rest of that, I would probably want to do some, do some additional research, but I think we see it as a good opportunity to, to reach another group of people.
And I appreciate that comment, because that's kind of where I'm going. You know, as I've said before, this is a local comprehensive plan, and we need to really find whatever method we can to tap into that, that age group of, you know, children in the school systems, the 40, 50-year-olds, 30, 40, 50-year-olds, that this is going to be their town in 30, 40 years. So I think it's important for us to try to find whatever method it is we can to communicate with them, and if, if this is it, okay, great, but if it's not, then, then we need to start figuring out how to get that to them.
Yeah, the only other thing I, Kathy, sorry, if you were going to join in, I think the other thing that we talked about was that you have an upcoming town meeting, and we, we see a good opportunity to have at least a flyer available for those town meeting members who, who are in person to identify the date and time with a QR code, and just give them a piece of paper that says this meeting is happening. And, and because I think that's another really important sort of demographic that we really want to start to make sure is aware of the project, is the people who go to town meeting are also going to be kind of critical, a critical audience that, you know, I'm not sure that we saw them at the Senior Center, but I think we have an opportunity to kind of diversify the number of people or the type of people who would, who would attend this.
When we did the vision statement, approximately, how many people did we get on the Zoom, on the, when we did the vision exercise, we did the individual?
Got about 80 people over three workshops.
Over three workshops?
Yeah. But I think that was also, as you remember, early on in COVID, and I'm not sure how comfortable people. Right. And I'm not sure necessarily how comfortable people, I think people are far more comfortable going online, I think of all demographics, but I do totally agree that, and I even mentioned that when I was talking to different people of, you know, having the opportunity to do things online, realizing that families, you know, parents of young children don't have the opportunity to go to a meeting at night. I mean, how are they going to do that? But they can go online, and they can do something on the map. They can come to this, you know, virtual meeting and be able to participate. And even if they can participate for half of it, and then they have to go, at least it's something that they can do.
Difficult demographic. We never had. Difficult demographic. We never have good luck getting parents with young children. They tend to be middle aged and they, and they showed up at the one in September.
Yeah, unless, unless school, there's a hot school argument at town meeting, they typically won't come to town meeting.
I guess, Madam Chair, just have one question. Do you feel it's out of the question to a hybrid meeting? I'm not, I think having it online is fine, but there are people that aren't comfortable with the technology that we're excluding from having them in the room. Would you be comfortable doing a hybrid meeting? People that want to come in the room, come? People that want to do it online, do it online. We have cameras, we have the technology, we got it right here.
You'd have to do it here and just?
Yeah. Why, why couldn't we do it here?
As long as you have enough, as long as we have enough space.
I don't think that we're going to have, I don't think we're going to flood.
The number of people that are going to physically show up is going to be half than what would participate.
Exactly.
So you may have, and if you had 50 people here, that's fine. You can always.
Take that other room over there for breakout.
That would be an embarrassment of riches, quite frankly.
Me too, me too.
So, so Jeff, is it possible for like us staff or something to be running our own breakout group, so to speak, here? Or I guess how, how would that work? Assuming that we're comfortable with the hybrid meeting, we're going to have enough people, enough space here, because most people will be virtual. Is that, is, is that something you guys would be able to manage?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's the, the one important element to that whole discussion would be that we have that access to that room. Where, because we would, to maximize it, I think we would want to do it at the same time. We would want to have the, the technology corresponding so, so that the presentation, you know, is happening to people in the room and people online are seeing the same presentation. So there's, I think that room is set up for it. I think when we had this initial discussion with Kathy, the only concern that we have is if, if we were to get a lot of people in person, that room has a fairly limited capacity. I would, I would be curious if there is like a posted total capacity limit on the room. Would want to know that. But yeah, we can do that. And our preference, if we're going to do that, is just make sure that it is truly a hybrid meeting, that things are happening at the same time. I know Kathy and I had a discussion about doing like a, an in-person meeting, you know, night A, and then doing a, an online meeting night B, some other date. And that would be something I think we would want to avoid just because I think it's too confusing for people to understand. And it's all, it's more staff time and it's a little bit more cumbersome. So if that's the preference of the board, I think we, I think we can do that. And then it's either that room. The only other question I have would be, I thought I heard at some point that the, that one of the schools has the hybrid technology set up. But I don't know if, if everyone's comfortable kind of shifting out to another location.
I don't know anything about that system. And I don't know whether our people who do the, the, the things here do as well. I guess I would feel more comfortable doing it here where we have more control over it. Plus we have more control over getting access to this particular room and securing that date versus at the intermediate school. Because I don't, you know, I'm sure they have things going on. I think, you know, Wednesdays typically work well because you guys are the first and third, and then the, the second and fourth are vacant. January of 2025 actually has five Wednesdays in it. So it's Jan, like a January 22nd or a January 29th would be dates that I could, I'm pretty sure that I, when I last checked, this hearing room wasn't booked for those. And it's out far enough that I'm sure it's fine. But if we could do the 22nd or the 29th, or even if you had to do like the fifth, which would be your regular meeting, you could just have this instead of your regular planning board meeting. No, February 5th. No, January's, yeah. I, I think we, we want to get a little bit further along in some of these ideas of maybe some action items so that we can come up, I think, with the facilitated questions and that type of thing. So I don't know what your schedule is at BSC group and then the planning boards, but those dates are something that is possible.
Yeah, if that's where the planning board wants to lean, I think we would like to map out those three dates, maybe. The January 22nd, January 29th and February 5th. And we can get back to the board soon. And then I think that would dovetail with getting some flyers and information ready. The, the first pulse is that upcoming town meeting. We want to definitely get the room booked and get like a meeting link and get some information flowing for that. So we can check on that, on those three dates and, you know, communicate with Kathy. And then make sure the planning board, as many planning board members are available as possible. I'm pretty comfortable with that. I think the one thing that I was thinking about with the dates and having in person is if we get some kind of significant snow event, I don't know exactly how we would want to handle that. And maybe we could just chat on that for a second, but maybe that would be, everything goes online or we have two dates. I think maybe two dates would be a good thing. I think if we're getting a blizzard, you know, no one's going to really want to be going online for that. So maybe we just have a second date available in case of a snow event. I think that's the, the one thing I would throw out there.
So you're looking at 22, 29 and 5?
Correct.
So if you do a, a fly it in the schools, it'd be better to do it on the 29th or 5th because the 20th is Martin Luther King's birthday. So the kids won't be in school until maybe Tuesday. I don't know. So if you do it the week after, you can put it in that Monday afternoon.
I think what I'm going to end up doing is do a little notice and ask them to, they have a whole program. It will translate it into every, all these different languages. So instead of the flyers, which I think might be kind of a little old fashioned now, and I don't know who has to do all the copies because they now have 3,000 students. They just have a whole program where if you give them the text, they will send it out in all the languages. So.
And you're going to do your phone call again?
And I'll do my phone call again. I'm going to see if I can't do it in a poem using AI.
Okay, Frank.
I think that would be great to give a little tip of the hat to Frank Fredwingsen.
He's not that busy.
In addition to the schools, we're going to go through our normal outreach.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yep. I think what, you know, what Jeff's saying is I normally, for all these town meetings, I do a postcard. And then everyone has a kind of the information. They pick it up with all the stuff that they pick up on the table as they're coming in. And that has been very successful, I think, getting the word out. And I just, there was just something that went out in the south, the Arm with water bills. I got mine the other day and I'll, I'll, unfortunately, I didn't have the date for it, but it brings people to the website so that they can keep up, places to go and to keep up with what, what the next opportunities are all included on that water flyer.
Can I just make one also, one comment? When you put your presentation together, could you please make a strong link between the vision statement and this? So that people understand why we're doing this. See, it's sort of a extension of the vision statement so that they understand, because a lot of them, if they participated in the vision statement, should be interested in this.
Oh, yeah.
And so when we make that link, the initial presentation, this is outcome of part of that vision statement exercise that we all did. It's not separate.
We have 400 people who have signed up for direct email notification, so I let them always know about things. Yep.
So it sounds like we're, we're okay with hybrid. And Kathy, you'll work with Jeff on the three dates, what seems to be, what, what seems to work best? Once B C, uh, B C, BCS is?
BSC.
BSC.
It sounds like we got to pick two dates, one primary date, one backup.
Backup, yeah. They need to look at their calendars to see what, what, what's best for them to.
And then have it ready so that it can be distributed at town meeting, which is only in two weeks.
One of the other things that Jeff and I talked about was, do we feel that on all of these different topics here, are there some that we feel we have a pretty good understanding on now and we're not necessarily need a deep dive? If you're doing breakout groups and trying to get information from every single person on this in, in 30 minutes, I'm concerned. So is there any way, are there some areas here where we really want to concentrate? I think that we have a little bit of a gap with our community sometimes on the climate resiliency and sustainability. So maybe having some very pointed facilitated questions on that might make a lot of sense. You know, housing, transportation, community character, design and economy, those are always big heavy hitters. Maybe we want to concentrate on. So I guess the question to the board is, did you, were there some of these that you wanted to concentrate on or did you want to try and touch on all of these?
You want to go through them step by step? Make natural, you're, you're talking about the community meeting number two, right?
Yes.
I mean, in the interest of time, you can certainly eliminate things like libraries and, just ask Will, he'll tell you what you need to know.
Don't present me because lots of other people have opinions too, Jim.
I was going to say, Jim, be a little careful there on that one.
I don't think we.
Last one I would.
I mean, didn't we, haven't we just done a study on libraries? So.
Process of a study on libraries.
So I guess that's what I'm getting at is we've, if we've already done some of this stuff, through other avenues, like.
But they're important to a lot of people.
Oh, they're important.
I'm not suggesting that they're not important. I'm just saying that we're, if we're already doing it.
Yeah, we're doing a study right now in the town on libraries. So what the best utilization.
Maybe on the, on the libraries, we just, just give an update or a one or two sentence update. Because that is one of the ones on, in the September meeting that got the most dots, right, Will? I think on that.
Did. It got a lot.
Two library questions, they all had lots of dots.
I just don't want to get caught into the, you know, is it a one centralized or separate? I think they're, they're doing a whole study on that.
That's kind of my point is that, you know, if we've got people already looking at some of this stuff, why reinvent the wheel or try to?
They did apply for the grant, which they should know about, whether they got that. And I believe in December, got delayed a little bit. So there could be, you know, just a quick update on something like that, letting people know that hopefully we got the grant and that they're going to be working on.
Yeah, I think on a, a couple of these, like libraries, open space, housing. It, it's been around the block several times with public hearings, our committees, other town, other town committees. Having something brief and, 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 you know, either a summary or something like that. But not to, not to open that, not to open it all up again. I don't think we need to.
And specifically, Madam Chair, in the case of housing and open space, there are literal plans.
Oh, yeah.
That are literally done. So we can just say, okay, you want to have a conversation? Read all this good stuff because that work, that, that earth has been plowed.
I think my only comment would be, it does, as Jeff was mentioning, it's really meant for affordable housing. And there's all this whole different area of community housing. So maybe we need to talk, maybe we need to talk a little bit more about that and kind of maybe get some ideas of where people might want to see, see this housing. I think we've been talking a long time about having, you know, expanding and taking a closer look at our mixed use zoning on Route 28. Because that's an opportunity of get, retaining our commercial corridor, but also getting the top of shop housing as well, which I think is kind of a, a win-win. So getting maybe some input from, from people on more community housing. But I think the facilitated questions, I guess, will be the, the key here.
You know, I just will jump in just briefly. I mean, I think we do have a little bit of time to continue to kind of think, think on how to, how or what topics to bring forward. So I don't think we, I, I think I appreciate what Kathy was, you know, asking. I think we don't need to necessarily decide that right now. We have a little bit of time. I think we are just trying to make sure we have clarity on the type of meeting, the date and things like that. And then we have the two months leading, or we have a month and a half. There's a lot of holidays in this type of, this time of year. So we do, but we do have some time to flesh out how that works. You know, it's, it's a little tricky because I think that even the discussion you just had is if you cut, if you cut something, you know, other people might think it's important. We, we will, we will kind of sharpen our pencils as to the best way to approach that. Some of it, I, I would just say, you know, we have a whole chapter on the capital infrastructure and facilities. And so there could be kind of this topical discussion of capital improvements and, and have a couple of the biggest items, you know, as, as topics of conversation. I think the climate resiliency is going to be a big one, I think, for all the Cape towns. I think just looking at that in the future is going to be just a huge, it's going to be a lot of investment. And, and then there's the rest of the things that the town has a lot of investment, a lot of investment needs. So the sewer, the sewer projects. So we can sharpen our pencils on that a little bit before obviously we finish the, the detailed approach on that meeting. So hopefully that's helpful.
Just one, one comment on, as you shaped the form of the meeting. You've got groups one, two, three and four. Are, is your intention to have group one be one breakout, group two be another breakout? Or are all of these topics going to be covered by each of the breakouts?
It's a great question. We've done it both ways. One methodology where, would be where if we break out the participants, both in person and online into, into four groups, and they each discuss something different and then report out. And when I was speaking with Kathy about that, I think the, the tendency or the leaning was more, if we're going to do it, it would be good to have the breakout groups cover the same topics so that someone doesn't feel like they, they didn't get to participate in some discussion. But that's still something we could massage a little bit as we, as we go forward. I think once we have this, this confirmation that we're going to do the, a true hybrid in person and online, I think that was the major thing we needed to identify tonight. And then we can, we can kind of hone in on the exact structure of the meeting. So it's, it could go either way.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Two things. First of all, I don't mean to disparage the library aficionados in town. I'm only, I was thinking that that report was already completed. And again, no sense recreating the wheel. The second thing is I, I have a question with regards to, where would the Matta Keys building fall into, into these discussions? I mean, I, I know we're not responsible for planning that, but it, this is our local comprehensive plan. So I'm kind of curious, which one of these groups would it fall under, if it were to be discussed?
All of them. Great question. Adam and I have, have discussed this a couple of times. And it, you know, there's obviously elements of what people have chimed in so far. There's elements that spread across almost all the topics. But I think, I think it's either going to be economy or some sort of capital improvement. I mean, I think the way that we've heard the discussions come through, you know, the committee that's being formed, the, the outline for, for creating, you know, that process, which will still unfold into the future. The process unfolding in the future is probably the main thing that we want to highlight in the, in the comprehensive plan. Is that the town continue to envision the reuse of that property. I think it'll be discussed briefly in a lot of the different topics. You know, open space and economic development and housing and even schools. I think it's, it's going to, it's going to be one of these through lines all the way through the plan. We have not written it all the way through, so we don't know exactly how it'll portray. But that's something that I think the planning board will start to see. We're, we're going to have a quick conversation about the schedule. And I think we're committed to trying to give a draft of the existing conditions and key issues by the middle of December. So I think we'll have it a little bit more fleshed out as to how the Matta Keys property kind of runs through the whole plan. We don't have that exactly right now yet.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I didn't get an, an updated schedule, but I think it's very similar to what we had before. Do, do you have that, Jeff, that you could share?
Yeah. Yep, I'll share. I kind of just wanted to annotate it briefly. So the first, this first schedule was sort of the original one. And I kind of just circled the areas. I don't think we're behind per se. I think we moved some of the work around a little bit. So the first circle, you know, it was like June and July, and it was under existing conditions, key issues and community goals. And so that, I would say, is happening, you know, now that we have that community input meeting under our belts. And we have a lot of the stakeholder conversations. So I'll show the next slide shows where that went. And then the other element is really this September block for key issues, needs, vision statement and the, the subtopics. I think what we're looking to do is just elongate that. I think it's just taking longer than we initially mapped out in the schedule. So this second page is kind of just to show what we think is really happening. As we took, you know, we're taking October, November to really flesh out and fill out the, those existing conditions. Not so much the vision statement, but the key issues and community goals. And then what we're proposing is to fill out that last column in the, the month of December to really get through the key issues, community goals. And then I added a line that didn't exist before, this, this sort of draft. You know, it's not going to be a draft, it's not going to be a draft of the complete document, but it'll be a draft of the key issues, needs, community goals. And we're, we're trying to commit now to providing that to the board by mid-December. You know, I was looking at your calendar and we think that we would submit it for your second meeting in December and, and probably just give it to the board and have the board time to print it or look at it online and, and read it and make, provide some comments and guidance for us kind of by mid-December. And then that really keeps us kind of back on track with the bottom task where we shift into 2025. We're still holding the January meeting, you know, maybe it's the end of January, but that, we're pretty much right on target. It's just kind of shifting around those, this last bit of 2024. And we didn't really exactly have the submission of a draft of sort of this early version draft. We didn't really have that as a task and now we, we kind of do. So Kathy. So Kathy asked me that, to provide this, the planning board, it sounded like you guys were interested in this update. So that's kind of what we have at this point.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Based on that? I can't remember. Are we working backwards from May Town Meeting in 2025, or are we working backwards from Fall Town Meeting in 2025?
Fall.
Okay, good. That's better. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Kath, we've covered this. We're good?
I think I'm good. You okay, guys?
Yeah, this was great. Thank you so much for letting us have the conversation. It's helpful for us right now.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for joining us. And Adam, thank you as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are meeting minutes. May I have a motion to accept meeting minutes of October 16th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. I was in prison.
Committee updates.
Madam Chair, may I kick it off?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. On Monday, November 4th, the RAC committee met. And as we know, we're in phase one of this grand project that has many more phases to come. However, just as a quick reminder, there are six contracts. The first one is the, is the, is the plant. The second one is east of Parker's River from Route 28 in Long Pond to North Main Street. That's underway. Contract three is from east of the Parker's River Bridge, including South Shore Drive. Contract four is Route 28 and North Main Street, near the Bass River Bridge itself. Contract five is going to be Route 28 west of Parker's River to get us, wait, yeah, Route, contract five goes halfway, and then contract six goes the last half, all the way to the town, the town border with Barnstable.
Going west.
West. Going west.
The pump stations, Will. Which contractor they in? I think there's six.
Five and six, I believe, have pump stations. Well, because one is for the park and one is for farther down. The reason I'm bringing that up, Madam Chair, is because while there has been slow and steady progress on contracts two and three, contracts one, five, and six have now been bid and selected. But because of the, the state process, it's taken a little longer. Everything is fine. It's just taking longer. In fact, there was actually an extension that had to be gotten on the SRF so that we can maintain our 0% interest. But we got it. And by the end of this month, contracts one, five, and six will be officially awarded through the SRF. Treatment plant, looks like it will break ground late winter slash early spring, as will contracts five and six. Contract four, I want to mention, that's the one that takes us up to the Bass River Bridge and a little bit of North Main Street. But the work that will start in the spring for that contract should be finished, we have been assured, by next fall of '25, so that our friends from Mastat can begin the Bass River Bridge project. So all of these things, yes, believe it or not, are being coordinated. Now, how they're going to play out and weather, et cetera, nobody knows, but at least that is the plan.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. But I just, I guess we're at the point where we can say that phase one, pending again some official state paperwork, you know, by the time we get to December 1st, phase one will be at least all executed, bid, and will come in under the 207 million. So we will borrow less than the 207 million, which is good news for the taxpayers. But in terms of the work actually starting, we'll have to wait a few more months until all six contracts are sort of underway. And that's where we are. Please, I'll do my best.
Didn't they lift the, the November probation?
Yes, we talked about that last meeting, absolutely.
So, but how does that affect these one?
That affects, that doesn't affect one, five, and six, but for two and three, the ones that are going on now, the ones that, you know, whether you like them or not, are still happening. The good news is, if the weather stays as, you know, warm, I would say, as unseasonable as it does, Susan, we'll be able to continue to go. And Jeff Colby is in an ongoing conversation.
That still doesn't destroy the synchronization at all between the?
No, in fact, it speeds up. It does speed up some of those things. But, you know, don't forget, there's also going to be paving and repaving. So just whether they get to, even if they do stop for the winter, there's definitely going to be repaving and patching and things that have to be done in the spring, not to mention the water line work that has to be done because the sewer line work got done. So basically, Yarmouth is under construction for a while. I mean, I think we all know that, but like, it's really going to come.
You can see it everywhere.
Exactly. And so I would say, especially when the plant kicks off, but the nice part about the plan is that it's kind of isolated compared to all the other contracts. But once we get to, I would say, spring of '25, Yarmouth's under construction for a while. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I ask a little question?
Sure.
Well, I know we're going to get this work done, and I know it's ongoing down Route 28. Who has recourse in the paving ability of?
That's a great question. One of the contractors specifically.
One of the contractors does a great job, and one contractor, I could take a shovel and do it myself.
I hear you. In fact, that did get brought up at the last meeting, that, and this is all public, so I don't, I can, I can name names. That would be Rivoli Construction.
I didn't want to say their name.
I can say it, because I sit in the meetings, and it's all public. So I'm not, I'm not hiding anything. It has been brought to, Jeff Colby is, I would say, working with them on a daily, if not weekly, basis to literally improve the quality of their patching.
Well, tell Jeff to get out and go look at how they're doing it. Because you see Robert Orr using a paving piece of equipment, and Rivoli is using the front end of a front end loader to dump the pave, the raw pavement into the holes, tamp it down with the loader, and then run a, you know, a roller over it. I'm like, it is night and day, to the point where a worker of mine literally broke their car coming to work the other day, coming down that section of 28.
Well, notwithstanding the fact that I'm sorry that that happened, I do hope that that is something that would get communicated to Jeff, that he understands that it's having that kind of impact.
I have no problem dropping him an email, but if he's aware of it.
He is totally aware of it. And again, it got brought up by a couple of members of our RAC committee about that exact issue. And I can just, I can tell you that Jeff is aware of it and isn't happy about it. But again, in terms of the execution and the improvement of the outcome, I can't speak to.
I truly feel bad for, if we do get snow this winter, I hope that the plow operators wear a helmet, because they're going to, they're going to eat the steering wheel.
It's a mess. Yikes.
One would think that the construction methodology is in the contract, so that Jeff has got some hook to go back and say, this is what you're supposed to be doing.
Yes, Susan, that did come up. And I think, you know, I think Jeff said it diplomatically, but, you know, I believe there's some economic impact on their contract.
Also.
Not to mention the fact that just as a practical matter, it should be done better. And, and also shouldn't be affecting people's vehicles to the extent that you described.
Well, the ultimate economic impact, of course, is to cancel the contract and give it, give the rest of it to Robert Orr. I mean, at least we've got two contractors. So if you, if you ever had to do the, you know, really penalize the, the bad guy, you always have someone that could pick up the walk.
Sure. And, and, you know, there's always holdbacks and contingencies and things like that. Sometimes those are effective, Susan, sometimes they aren't. But I'm glad you brought that up. And, and it is something that did come up in our meeting on Monday. And notwithstanding that you don't need to send more email and get more email, Ken, as none of us do, but I do think that if Jeff knew that that specific incident happened.
I'll drop, I'll drop an email tomorrow. Be happy to do so.
Yeah, because.
I wanted to go to Monday's meeting and actually express my concern, but I had a capital budget meeting that day.
Understood. Ah, yes, the work of the planning board never ends, does it? But again, the committee had a discussion about it, and Jeff gave everybody the impression that he's not happy about it either. And hopefully that will improve.
I will drop him a friendly email tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other committee reports?
Madam Chair, I'll take some capital budget. So we are actually in the home stretch, thank God. Yeah, it's been a lot of meetings in a short amount of time. We have actually met with every single department head, actually including Kathy last week, I think it was, right? Over the last month. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with school committee. And then after that, we'll start up our voting process of what we deem as necessity. So we're in the home stretch. We have four more meetings before we make a presentation to the finance committee and the select board later in the month. And I'm, I'm glad we're in the home stretch. It certainly has been, as I said last year, it's certainly been eye-opening. And a lot of good has come out of it. One of the things, for example, three different departments are buying pickup trucks from three different companies. We have actually now got them all to work together and to go to one place in Plymouth to purchase the vehicles from. And maybe we can get some better pricing if they buy them in bulk.
What a concept.
What a concept.
Are they all going to be the same color, or do they get all picked up in colors?
There is one color. There is one, one color now in the town of Yarmouth. That color happens to be white, just so everybody knows. Yarmouth white. But, but at least they're all going to go to the same purchaser now, which is exciting.
I love we keep that tradition, that Yarmouth white that we've had forever.
Other committee members?
Madam Chair, if I may, a couple of community announcements. Still not too late, ladies and gentlemen. If anybody watches this, I don't know if our selectmen are watching this, I'll address that next. But if they do, you can still buy a plank for the boardwalk at the park. That's not just a boardwalk. Go online, Tony Yarmouth, $350 for an individual, $450 for a nonprofit, and $550 for business. Great Christmas present, good way to remember somebody. Tony Yarmouth, I think we sold about?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty, not about, according to Kathy, eighty-seven.
Kathy, are there a total, two?
There's 200 that are actually included in the contract. And we were hoping to get 200 so they can be installed by the contractor, but there's about 2,000 planks altogether. That's going to take a little bit longer. I'm going to start another publicity. I was hoping I had a publicity of trying to get 200 planks by Halloween, and we got 87. So I'm going to see if we can't get, get a few more. But at some point, Robert B. Orr is going to say, you know, I gotta, we gotta install them. We can't keep engraving them.
Is there a deadline?
I've asked for a deadline. I haven't heard back.
Maybe a handout or a flyer at town meeting, because we have nothing else to do.
Yeah, I've been, I handed out just as many plank flyers at, at the Seaside Festival and the Police Night Out as I did LCP information. So I've been hawking them everywhere, Jim.
Outstanding. My second community.
Endeavor.
Announcement. If anybody's watching this on TV, you'll notice there's only six of us. So we still have the need for another member to join our committee, and hopefully somebody will do so. Last thing I have is, is to bring the fellow members of our board up to date, if you didn't get a chance to watch the selectments meeting last week. Our letter went on deaf ears. Either the town administrator or the chair of the board elected not to even put it in their packet, never mind give us the courtesy of a discussion. So I think sometimes, why are there not people looking forward to getting on this committee? Why do people really want to serve this town if the leadership isn't willing to give them respect for the time that they're doing? So if you're listening to this board of selectment, you might want to think about that. That's my soapbox for today.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. Any other committee report outs? I have a couple. Thank you so much for putting me on the community housing. I have, I have so much to learn. I mean, they have their own alphabet soup. The agenda, just bear with me. I know you want to go. Affordable Homes Act, Soldier on, Soldier on Veteran Housing Model, Affordable Housing Standards, MUC, Home Consortium, Yarmouth Housing Authority, Affordable Housing Trust, Short Term Rental Study, Emergency Home Repair RFP, Rental Buy Down RFP, Home Preservation, Proposed Amendments to the Affordable Housing Bill law, Year Round Rent Initiatives.
That's one meeting?
That's just, that's just another A. That's just another A.
It's one meeting.
How long is this meeting scheduled for, Madam Chair?
Meet with the chair and. A sleepover.
Bring my jammies. So there are a couple of highlights, though, that I, I think I understand what happened. Again, I, I gotta get up to speed on all these things. But a couple of things I didn't know. One, the RFP for Short Term Rental Study has, is out and been awarded, and it's in the $80,000 to $100,000 range to Donahue, the Donahue Group, UMass, Donahue Group.
What did that study again?
The Short Term Rental Study.
Right, but what is it?
Essentially, it's, the study RFP is for Donahue to find, do an assessment of all the short-term rentals in town, and then do a further evaluation as to whether or not they affect affordable housing and any other housing needs in town.
An assessment of the short-term rentals, what does that mean?
How many do we have? Yeah. How many do we have? How big are they? Where are they?
It's just an account.
Yeah.
And then that number, how it affects the overall housing?
If it does, if it does affect, if it does affect other.
How would they measure the effect, do we know?
I, I haven't seen the RFP. Kathy, have you, have you seen it?
What was the question?
How, they, they're trying to measure the effect of short-term, how, what does, how are they going to measure this effect?
I think they're going to take a look at the, how things have progressed over time. And they, they have access to a bunch of different data that we don't necessarily have. Just trying to identify, I mean, how many do we have in the past? How many do we have now? What kind of revenues are we getting? And what's the balance between getting revenues for wastewater, where 75% of short-term rentals goes to our wastewater program, versus what is it actually doing to our year-round housing? Is it impacting our year-round housing to the point where maybe we need to start looking at, you know, different types of regulations to help regulate that, set limits on it, or whether it's, it seems to be reasonable right now, and we don't need to do anything? Trying to give us some ideas of any type of regulations that we might want to undertake.
Madam Chair, can I touch this a little bit? Because the Donahue Group, when I was on the Cape Chamber, we had met with them. They actually did a study for the Town of Province Town.
It's similar.
What that town is, of Yarmouth is, you know, it's out of UMass Dartmouth. And they did an amazing job. That study is actually online. So if you go to Town of Province Town, you can see the study.
I think I forwarded it to you guys in the past.
I believe you did. And I just will say, it was very insightful, and they did an amazing job with the information. They have resources, as you touched on, Kathy, that just, you know, you and I couldn't get at. You know, for example, resources at Airbnb and all that stuff, we would never get that data, so.
Sure, it's going to be interesting information to see, but, you know, I think the town is already married, short-term rentals, and the bride and groom have already walked down the aisle. So what we're going to do, I mean, we're committed to it because of its connection to wastewater. So I don't know what our options are when we get the final results, what options it's going to give us to change. But, because we're kind of stuck with wastewater.
Sunset clause, though, don't we?
We do have a sunset clause. We do have a sunset clause with, with short-term rentals. You've got to remember that. And one of the biggest things, you know, out of, you know, my background was hotels, as we all know. And the study done in Province Town, one of the biggest things that I took from it is the short-term rental effect and the degradation to the hotel industry in that town. That's the one thing that we have to be careful in this town, that we don't let short-term rentals basically drive out our bread and butter, which is the hotel industry.
I would think that would be the bigger effect of short-term rentals than on, on the general housing stock.
Interesting. And, and my other committee, the Community Preservation Committee, you know, we're looking at evaluating projects requesting CPA funding. And since our last meeting, we've had reviews with the South Yarmouth Methodist Church Rehab. They want to redo the clavard on that. The Friends of Ancient Cemetery Preservation want to do some more cleaning of headstones and footstones. We've met with the principal of the Station Avenue Elementary School for improvements to the playground there. That is town-owned property. And they, they desperately need to make it ADA accessible. It's not now. And, and other improvements. It's, it's, the playground is in, is in tough shape. I believe it's also a CIP, do they come to CIP as well?
They are next week, actually.
Right. So they've proposed, they've made a proposal to us. The Bass River, not Bass River, Cultural Center of Cape Cod has made a request for a limited access, limited use elevator to their basement. It'll go one story from the main down to the lower level. They want to open up some areas for workspace down there. And there's no, there's no ADA, very little. I mean, it's an old bank building. So they've come to us. YD Red Sox have come to us with a safety project to replace the outfield fence and put in a warning track. That's on school district property. And the school district has a little bit of an issue with it because of Title IX requirements on investments in baseball for boys and the need for improvements to the softball field for the girls. That's not something we can solve. But the YD Red Sox have a lease with the district, and it's a dollar a year. So it seems to me they could, and to the committee, that they should look at, the school, the schools should look to open up that lease and maybe find some funding. schools should look to open up that lease and maybe find some funding through the YD Red Sox. What else did we have? And then today, we met, the Affordable Housing Trust came with their request, Chase Brook Park came for its request, the Pocket, Two Pocket Parks getting combined, and Hands of Hope, which is a very small group out of Harwich, but they help Yarmouth residents with, who are close to being homeless, they can't make their rent, they provide emergency rental payments, first and last month rent, to get them into apartments that they can afford. So we've got a whole host of projects that we're looking at. So we've seen everybody, and we start deliberations at our next meeting next week.
Plus, you have to do this job and your other job?
And my other jobs.
You must be awesome.
Not tax season, you got plenty of time, Joe.
Madam Chair, what Mr. Saban said earlier is that we really do need a seventh member.
Yeah, we do.
Because of where we're spread out.
No, absolutely, absolutely. Anyway, Kathy, anything for us, correspondence or staff updates?
I think the only staff update, although I hate to mention it, is the Matta Keys Utilization Committee had their, is having their first meeting right now.
Speak.
As we speak, in Conference Room A, and the information I...
Let's go crash it.
The information I provided you did include a memo from Bill Scott with regard to outlining kind of a way of addressing this. So I think he's gonna identify all these different land uses, you know, whether it's economy, recreation, housing, schools, town services, and then kind of have basically working groups for all those different areas, and then with liaisons from, from the MUC, and then those different groups kind of providing their proposals of what they might like to see to the MUC, who then would then kind of digest it and then work with the consultant to get some plans developed. I think the idea is maybe some of these groups would actually spend some of their money, some money of their own to come up with their proposals, like housing, there's money available to housing, they could possibly hire a consultant, say, oh, what, how many number of housing are we looking at, what might that look like? And there's an opportunity, I think, for Planning Board members to participate, I think, in these different groups or come to these meetings.
Is it always gonna be on Wednesday night?
I don't think so. I don't know. I, I don't know.
It would be amusing, if I could use that word, Madam Chair, if they chose to have their regular meetings on Wednesday nights. I just think that would just be a chef's kiss.
Fincom night.
I can touch on that a little bit, is once Capitol Budget ends, not next week, because next week's the 11th Veterans Day. Thanks, thank you, veterans. The Monday after that is our last Monday Capitol Budget meeting. My understanding is that meeting will start, move to Mondays.
The MUC meeting?
I see.
That's right.
Did we ever find out who the genius was who created this mechanism of planning? I mean, where did it come from, that planning and economic development were not included in a major redevelopment? Who came up with that? Is this the Bill Scott Committee? I mean, I'm just asking, thinking out loud, but I mean, come on.
This is the process that the Select Board has defined.
So did the Selectment come up with this idea, or was that town staff?
I don't know, Jim. As I know, is this is what, how we're moving forward, and I think the, I think the most important thing is to move forward on the Matta Keys and come up with some plans so that we don't continue to be paying maintenance costs on a building that's really not being, vast majority is not being used. So onward and upward, moving forward.
Anything else, Kath?
No, I think that's it.
Upcoming meetings, oh, I just wanted to mention, we did have the meeting with the Select Board, Kathy, me, and Jim Saban, and presented the articles, and I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, I think so.
We're fine with that.
Madam Chair, will it be time for one more question of Kathy at the end?
You can do it now. No, no, go ahead.
I know that Kathy and I corresponded about this, but we're about 90 days away from the Governor's Housing Bill going into effect, and I just wanted to bring it up one more time to see if, you know, if Kathy has any, I'm sure she does, have some intention in talking to Town Council and having that nice person come to us maybe in January or late December to give us their recommendations based on what other Cape towns might be facing and how we can do the best we can to work with this implementation. Thank you.
I think what we're trying to do, and we haven't, obviously, there's so many projects going on, is, and I know that Mark's kind of looked at this, and we've been going to these different, different groups have been sponsoring different types of informational meetings, we, I went to one that had representative from KP Law to kind of interpreting it. The State is running their own kind of series in order to garner questions, because they're gonna be coming out with some guidance documents as well. How quickly that's gonna be happening, I don't know, and, but I know that both Mark and Dolores went to a state-run one recently, and it seemed to be like they were looking for the questions that people had, so that they would know the questions to answer in the guidance document. They didn't really provide any answers.
Funny way of giving guidance, but, okay.
Well, just things like, there's a lot of questions, like, can you do an ADU on a property that has a duplex on it? Or is it only single-family homes? So there's, there's a lot of really, really good questions, and when people start getting into the weeds of how it would actually be implemented, that, that needs some further resolution. And this is the problem with changing Chapter 40A via a bond bill, because no one's putting the thought into the actual language and what that means.
And it shows.
And it shows, yeah. And there's definitely work that needs to be done, with the ideal being trying to have something at annual town meeting. Again, if we don't do something, it's just identifying the portions of our bylaw that are not enforceable by Mark.
Right. On February 2nd.
Right, exactly. And the other thing is, we may...
Tomorrow.
It would only be a simple majority vote at town meeting, and I don't know what happens if they don't vote for it. It goes back to, it goes back to what we have now that's unenforced, the portions are unenforceable, so it's...
Well, again, Madam Chair, I only bring this up because, as, as we just said over here, February 2nd is practically tomorrow, and I know that, Kathy, I understand how busy you are, I would just hope that the Town Council would be able to use some support in a place, in a time where you could use it, so that in the month of January, when we have our first or second meeting, we can at least...
Get some clarification.
Yeah, be ready to be ready.
Yeah, we had questions about the Transportation Center in Hyannis, and steamship, is it considered a transportation center, you know?
That whole thing.
I bet it is.
Bet it is.
I do, too, and that's what, I would like some answers on that, because it certainly affects West Yarmouth, so...
Hyannis Park, Big Time.
If they're looking for questions, Kathy, I'm assuming that's one that we would be glad to submit to them.
Yeah.
Right, is, how do they care?
Somebody actually asked that question.
If that would help, then that's what we should do, Madam Chair. If they, you know, they're looking for questions, we should put their questions together for them.
That was one of the questions in the recent one, was what counts as that? Is it a bus stop, or is it a transportation center? I can't imagine that the Hyannis Transportation Center wouldn't be considered that. I don't know if the Steamship Authority, because not many people...
But that's, that is transportation.
It is transportation, and it's state-run, so...
It's, I guarantee that's what they're counting, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you would think.
Have they looked at the, the issue of the seasonal community...
Designation.
Designation? And how would we go about getting one? Whether we want one or not?
We are not a seasonal community now, we would even get the automatic designation. I'd like to wait a little bit and see what, what are the good and the bad that comes with seasonal communities? And I think some of the things I've seen is that you're required to have certain zoning things for like tiny homes and this type thing and that type of thing, so, and it would also need to go through town meeting, according to Town Council.
So we need to be careful what we look for.
You make sure we understand all the rules when we accept the designation.
What I noticed about seasonal was trampled even more on local jurisdiction.
That's right.
Basically said we...
That's what I understood.
That's how I read it, is we lost, we lose even more control.
Is it our neighbors across the river that did get designated?
They did.
Right, so the good news is, Kathy, is we have a good relationship with those, with those folks, despite what some may think, that they're gonna get to experience this, and we're gonna be, you know, a mile and a half away, so that maybe we can learn, like you said, from what they're going through, and see how it translates, you know, over this side of the river.
I'm hoping that guidance document, and then they had, they formed a whole...
Right, there's like a task force.
Yes, basically, yeah. So they have something, I think they had 180 days to do something with them as well, so it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that, but that's, that's way down the line.
And they spent a tremendous amount of time doing their ADU zoning in the first place. They spent almost, yes.
Years and years.
A standing committee, it was incredible, the work they put into that.
And Dennis.
We'd have it...
Blown up.
Well, unlike all the work that we did, which also got blown up.
We'd have it fall apart, right.
This was a measly 18 months.
Yeah, theirs was what, 36, Susan?
Yeah, weekly.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I understand...
No, that's important, I think, we can, we can have it kind of as a standing...
It's a check-in.
Check-in at every meeting. Hack had their annual conference at the, at the Cape Cod or whatever it's called now, Irish Village, I guess, or Margaritaville, which I attended, and the Secretary of HLC was, was there, Housing and Livable Communities, and he was, he was talking about it, and the same thing as Kathy's just said, they're looking for all the questions from the people, like building, you know, commissioners and the like, and they're doing a lot of outreach to, to drill down and find out what the regulations need to look like, so...
Also advocating a tax on million-dollar sales of property, an additional tax, kind of like the millionaire's tax. If your property sells, if it's over a million dollars, they want to put a surcharge on that.
I don't, was that in the bond bill?
No, it's...
It was originally in it, it didn't get...
Yeah, no, it got kicked out.
Just they haven't let it go. It's, it hasn't gone anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Our, our next meeting will be the 20th, but in the meantime, we'll have a special town meeting on November 19th. Susan will be presenting our articles.
The Susan Show.
And that's all I have.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn?
Well, hold on, sorry, no sec.
My motion?
Sorry, is there a reason to meet on the 20th?
I don't have anything.